Good evening, and I've called order. The emergency.
Plan and zone meeting for the city of Davenport. I'd appreciate if you have a cell phone in the audience, if you'd please turn it off as it could affect our recording. We'll start off with our public hearing. Roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin. Oh, I guess we don't have one. You're right. My mistake. We will start off with our regular meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin.
Schneider.
President.
Lammers.
President.
Johnson.
President.
Tomlin here.
President.
Hepner.
Here.
Bransguard.
Here.
Reinartz.
Here.
Manus.
Here.
Garrington.
Here.
Stalk.
Here.
We have a forums chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Report to the city council activity.
Uh, the last week they did approve the right-of-way vacation for 59th and Tremont, so that will be going through the process to get that over into the hands of the developer.
Thank you. Secretary's report. Secretary's report has been moved and seconded as printed. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, it will stay as printed. Anything going on with comp plan?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Laura. Zoning activity, new business, Commissioner Tomlin, I mean, Lammers. Sorry, I was messing with you. Commissioner Lammers, who, by the way, Commissioner Lammers, this is her final me- meeting of her 10-year career as a volunteer. I appreciate it very much. The whole commission appreciates it and hope you well in your future endeavors.
All right. Case REZ 22-01, request of Patrick Finley to rezone property located south of Telegraph Road and east of South Utah Avenue, the southwest 9.15 acre parcel, number S 3117-04, from S AG Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District, Ward 1. Staff recommends the case REZ 22-01 be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the following condition: No more than two R1 single-family residential lots shall be plotted on the 9.15 acre area, and I so move.
Case number REZ 22-01 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
All right, so just an overview of our request. The property owner owns a total of 59 acres of land. This is on the western limits of the city, so this is the east side of Utah Avenue, located south of Telegraph Road and then north of West River Drive. The area proposed to be rezoned, though, is just 9.15 acres of that total 59 acres of land, so that's outlined and right on the map. Site's currently used for farming and open space. So the purpose of the request is to create two new single-family lots. The applicant has submitted a subdivision plan showing how that would be proposed on the site. So the two lots would be a 4.15 acre lot and a 5 acre lot located along Utah Avenue. The remainder of the site, which is about 50 acres of land, will remain under the current zoning district, which is agricultural. So the purpose of the agricultural district, it's really meant to accommodate existing agricultural land uses. So these standards promote the continuation of farming and protect agricultural land uses from encroachment of incompatible development. So a minimum lot area for agriculture is 1 acre, and then a minimum lot area for other uses, so that would include a dwelling, is 38 acres. So as the site stands today, one dwelling would be allowed. And then the proposed petition is to rezone to R1 Single Family Residential District. This is the lowest-density, single-family zoning district in the city. It's really meant for large lots and generous yards, and that has a minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet. So the table shows dimensional standards for the current R1 district, so minimum 20,000 square feet or about .46 acres. So the two lots that are proposed, which will come before the commission at a later date for plating, Lot 1 would be just over 217,000 acres, and then Lot 2, 180,000 acres. Minimum lot width is 100 feet for the R1 district. The two lots that are proposed are over-doubled that at 231 feet in width. So on the screen you have the zoning for the area, which is largely agricultural. However, there is a R1 residential along Utah Avenue, more so as you head south towards River Drive, and then north of Telegraph, there's also residential along Utah Avenue. So when determining rezoning, you want to ensure that the new zoning district is compatible with the established neighborhood character. So doing a little bit of research, there's 15 continuous lots along Utah Avenue that contain single-family dwellings, some of which are zone R1, others fall under the agricultural district. I know at our last meeting, we had a question about utilities. So the property will be served by water, gas, and electric utilities, but not sanitary sewer, so that would require a private septic system, which is permitted by Scott County Health Department. Future land use map shows the area as agricultural reserve. So this is meant for a property that's outside of the urban service area and unlikely to develop in the foreseeable future. So uses are generally limited to agriculture and open space with limited residential development, needing minimal urban services, so single-family would fall under that limited residential category. In terms of public input, property owners within 200 feet were notified of the public hearing on March 1st. And a public hearing notice was also published in the Quad City Times. At that meeting, two individuals spoke in favor of the rezoning, the property owner to the north and west, as well as a potential buyer of one of those single-family lots, and then the property owner to the south spoke in opposition. However, to date, staff have not received any comments in writing. So staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request with the following condition: That no more than two R1 single-family lots be plotted on that 9.15 acres. So basically, just limiting it to the proposed development plan that's shown. Staff reviewed the rezoning request with our approval standards outlined in our ordinance. So it meets the following: So the proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, as well as adopted land use policies. The petition is compatible with the zoning and land uses of nearby property. The rezoning request is compatible with the established neighborhood character, which includes single-family dwellings, agriculture, and open space. The proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, and welfare of the city, and rezoning the property does not create any non-conformities.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions at this time from the commission? Seeing none with the, oop, sorry. Got in just under the wire. Commissioner Manus.
Thank you. Matt, do you see any concerns here about establishing a precedent of allowing R1 in an area that is designated on the comp plan as agricultural? I appreciate your careful analysis here and how you did more than just say this is not adjacent to R1. But do you see any precedent here that could come back to haunt the city in future applications?
I don't with this petition. Along South Utah Avenue, there are properties zoned R1 that are also under the agricultural reserve land use, so there's no required change to our land use plan should this property be approved under the R1 district.
Okay. Those two lots shown in yellow, were those R1 on the map you had there?
Yes.
Okay.
And the proposed rezoning, those lots, oh, you can see on this map, those are about an acre and a half down there.
Okay.
So this, the two proposed lots are considerably larger than those two.
Okay. And those are in the agricultural district on the land use map of the comprehensive plan?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Manus. Commissioner Lammers?
In keeping with that thought, I was thinking similar. Traditionally, if a residential unit was built on an ag, it was for the purpose of tending to the crops and the animals, et cetera, and there was no rezoning needed for that to happen. So just thinking big here, are we taking away the ag opportunities by converting to unique residential one zonings and diminishing the ag land in the area because of that? Or, you know, are we wiping out the whole spirit of ag zoning to begin with? I guess that's what worries me, is that we're picking and choosing where we're going to go ahead and allow some residential zoning to happen when it's zoned ag and when a house can be built without a zoning change, as long as its occupants are managing the land, and in our notes it says this is a working farm. So why would we, why would we allow this to happen? I guess, I'm just curious.
So you can build a single-family home under the agricultural zoning district, however you need a minimum of 38 acres to do so. So as it stands today, one home can be built on the 59 acres, so the rezoning to R1 essentially allows two extra homes, as proposed. So on the 59 acres of land, if approved under the proposed plat, would allow for three homes on 59 acres, and those 50 acres of land that will remain agricultural can still be used for farming and agricultural activity.
That doesn't make me feel any better, but thank you for your attempt there.
I think it's important to realize we're looking at very specific standards that are outlined in our zoning code for us to review, and we review them against those. And so while I understand that you're talking about some agricultural use that will be taken out, there, I think last time we mentioned that there is some topography associated with this property as well. So it's not taking as much out of production as, it's not the entire lot that's being even taken out of production at this time.
By allowing the change in zoning, do we encourage others to come forth and now start requesting similar zoning changes on ag land? Do you have that concern moving forward?
I just would like to point out that the ag district is more of a holding district. I mean, we are a municipality, and the plans for the city is that we would continue to grow it, although we do that in an organized manner. We don't want leapfrog development and sprawl, but as the city goes older, we are anticipating development. And so we're not anticipating that all this ag land is going to be held and reserved and never developed. That's not what our anticipation is. The anticipation is that the Scott County planning associate, they maintain ag reserves, they try to protect the farmland there, they try to direct development into the city of Davenport. So our zoning is ag for now, but it's not like that's intended to be the final development level of that. Additionally, we have major through fairs like Utah and Wisconsin and other, a lot of those streets have similar development, where there are larger lot residential facing the street and on the interior of the, you know, the square mile, the typical Iowa square mile, there has the ag, and that's where they do the ag uses. But, so that's kind of how things have developed over time in West Davenport.
Thank you, Scott. And I'd like to add that I drove by there a couple times in last week, including today, and if you add up the number of residential lots between Locust Street and River Drive already in place on Utah, that is some probably still zoned ag, some converted to residential, it's probably 30 lots, I would say, probably 2/3 of which are north of Telegraph, 1/3 are between River Drive and the Finley property, the petitioner's property. So this isn't a new situation out there, this is just extension of the dozen homes to the south of there. I don't see that this is precedent-setting by any stretch of the imagination, considering all the homes that are already on Utah, between Locust Street and River Drive.
Any, Commissioner Lammers?
I just saw a pattern occurring, and I just wanted to make sure that it was well thought out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any additional questions before I open the floor to the petitioner?
One more.
Commissioner Manus?
Thank you. Does the city see any problem with allowing these large lots with septic systems in terms of eventually becoming a problem as density increases and sewer is not available?
So generally speaking, when you have something on septic, the larger the lot, the better. It means it can stay on septic for longer. Septic fields expire after a certain time, and you have to kind of move them. So having larger lots are a good thing. We do have in our ordinance, if, when sewer becomes available and is within a certain distance from a home, then it would be required to connect in. So it's not inhibiting future connections to sewer, it's just allowing some level of development that's tolerable without being connected into our sanitary system to develop at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Manus. Commissioner, I mean, would the petitioner like to step forward and fill in any blanks that staff or we have not addressed?
Hi, my name's Pat Finley. One thing I want to note is the front, the west off of Utah Avenue, that's a huge ravine. That's like over 2 acres right there. And then Lot 2 is just a huge dip, and there's also a huge rolling dip in Lot 1, so a majority of both those lots are, there's hardly anything there to farm, very little. But like I said, in the front ditch, it's at least 2 acres of a deep ravine that's out in front of, that runs along Utah Avenue.
Thank you. Any additional thoughts?
That's all I think of.
Commissioners, questions for the petitioner? Final call? Thank you, Mr. Finley.
Thank you.
Would anybody else in the audience care to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the petition? Seeing none, final call for questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider?
Yes.
Lammers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes.
Hepner? Yes.
Bransguard?
Yes.
Reinartz?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
Stalk?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That would conclude the zoning activity. We will move on to subdivision. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items this evening. The first is case F 22-03, request of Splendor Homes LLC on behalf of KJTLJ LLC for a final plat of Splendor Estates, 47 lot subdivision on 26.11 acres, located at 2448 and 2460 East 60th Street and Ward 8. Staff recommends the Plan and Zoning Commission forward case F 22-03 to city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the listed findings and conditions, and I so move.
Second. Case number F 22-03 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
All right, so the commission approved the preliminary plat for this subdivision at their January 4th meeting, so the applicant has come back with a final plat for this residential subdivision. So it's located just to the west of Jersey Ridge Road, south of Cromwell Circle, and the northern limits of this piece of land is Pheasant Creek. The property is zoned R3, which is consistent with the adjacent subdivision to the west, as well as to the south, so lot sizes will be compatible with the neighborhood character. And the future land use map identifies the area as residential general, so it's fitting with our comprehensive plan. There is a bit of topography on this site, so along Pheasant Creek, there is some floodplain, and then the grade tends to slope down towards that northern portion of land. So there's 47 lots that are proposed. There'll be two connection points, one on 61st Street, where it currently stubs into the Eastern Avenue Farm subdivision, and then there'll be an access point on Jersey Ridge, directly across from Lorton Avenue. There are four proposed outlets. One along the proposed, just across from Lorton Avenue in Jersey Ridge, and then the ones along the north will contain the floodplain for Pheasant Creek, as well as detention for the subdivision. The detention will be maintained by a homeowners association. So city staff is recommending approval, subject to the listed findings and conditions. So the findings are that the plat conforms with the comprehensive plan, the plat prepares the area for future development, and the plat with conditions achieve consistency with subdivision requirements. So there are 12 conditions proposed, many of which are minor notes and labels to add on to the plat. Just a couple to point out. Condition number four is to include a note indicating the ownership and maintenance of any future hard surface in the driveway detention easement, sorry, driveway and detention basin access easement located to the east of Lot 26. So Lot 26 is on that northwest corner, and then it'll share a driveway, as well as an access point to the stormwater detention. And then note number eight is that stormwater detention and water quality treatment are required for this subdivision, and will be owned and maintained by the, either the owner or the homeowners association. So those are the two main ones I just wanted to highlight for the commission.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions at this point? Commissioner Reinartz?
Matt, thank you. I've got a question. If we go back to the plat design where the road enters onto Jersey Ridge, I have a concern about where that entry and exit point for that new development's going to be directly opposite Lorton, on that S-curve area. I'm reasonably familiar with that geography, and in the summertime and fall, spring, there's quite a bit of foliage along there, and it's very difficult to see what's coming south on Jersey Ridge, or what's going north on Jersey Ridge, from that vantage point right there where they show it coming out opposite Lorton. Is there a plan to put a traffic light there, especially with two residential areas dumping into the same main artery? And that, both of those arteries are going to support a lot of cars in and out in the mornings and evenings. So there's going to be, I foresee, the potential for a lot of, lot of traffic in a blind spot area.
So at this time, there's not, but it is also the existing entry point for 60th at this point. So from an engineering perspective, they wanted to see, you generally try to have streets line up with each other instead of having them staggered. When you have them staggered, you end up having a greater likelihood of turning movements causing accidents. So that's why it is lined up with the existing street right now.
Well, no, it doesn't.
It does. I mean, they're changing the angle so that it's a 90-degree, which is optimal, to have it perpendicular to Jersey Ridge there.
I'm thinking of the entrance right there at Prairie Heights. Okay, that does not line up opposite Lorton.
But...
This one will.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, that it will. We want it to.
But what about the potential for all the traffic there in a blind spot area?
So the general response from engineering on that is they will monitor traffic at the time, and as the need is required, they will take any kind of traffic measures that are necessary at the time. So there is future plans at some point to do some improvements on Jersey Ridge, so, and as well as they, they will be grading the property as well. So if there is some foliage that's an issue, it won't be there at that time.
Okay. I'm not happy with the answer, but I think there's a potential problem there.
There is also, one of the outlets is directly abutting Jersey Ridge Road at that southern point, so there won't be a structure
Right.
on that outlet, so that should help with visibility in terms of not having a home there or a fence or anything like that.
That answers my question.
I would like to remind you that when we're reviewing this, we're reviewing it for the conformance with the subdivision code, and so that is one of the factors there. So we're looking at the land itself, that the entry point exists, and engineering did review it, and they did not have that comment about concerns of how the, the street lined up with Lorton. That's actually what they prefer.
Any additional questions at this time? Seeing none, would the petitioner like to step forward? Please identify yourself.
Mike Richman with Townsend Engineering. As Matt mentioned, the conditions are pretty simple to address, mostly notes. Number four regarding the pavement into that outlet, that'll be maintained by the homeowners association, and we'll get that in the final plating documents. We understand about the water quality on note eight. We're going to try to make the detention basins wet basins, if possible, to take care of the water quality there, rather than making a bunch of bio swales on the individual lots. I just wanted to mention on number 12, I did have a curve table in there, and some reason when I emailed it to the city, it disappeared, so that's why there's a big blank space at the bottom. And then the entry point off Lorton, we changed the geometry, like staff mentioned, to make it perpendicular to Jersey, to make it safer, because there is a plat in right-of-way there already, 60th. And just north of that, we're going to have one of the detention basin outlets, which will be free of obstruction, so foliage immediately adjacent to that will be removed, and will make it more visible for people leaving the subdivision.
Thank you.
And any questions? I'll entertain.
Any questions, commissioners? Apparently not. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak, either in favor and opposition? Please step forward. Seeing none, final questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin?
Lammers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Hepner?
Yes.
Bransguard?
Yes.
Reinartz?
No.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
Stalk?
Yes.
And Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second case this evening is ROW 22-02, request of the Overland Group on behalf of Dollar General for a partial right-of-way vacation or abandonment of the alley at 2340 Rockingham Road and Ward 1. Staff recommends the Plan and Zoning Commission accept the listed findings and forward case ROW 22-02 to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the listed conditions, and I so move.
Second.
Case number ROW 22-02 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Scott?
Scott Coops Development and Neighborhood Services. If you recall, we had a public hearing for this two weeks ago. This is to accommodate a Dollar General in the corner here, and the alley is going to be vacated between land that they own on each side of the alley. So the primary purpose, or there's two reasons for the, the necessary for the vacation. One is the city of Davenport doesn't like to have parking pulled off, you know, directly off of an alley, and so if we vacate it, then it's not an alley, and it's not our liability. Additionally, there's slower traffic going through there. The second reason is that the, if I go to the next slide here, the loading dock is If I go to the next slide here, the loading dock is such that the trucks would block where the former alley would be, or would have been. And so, they don't have to worry about blocking a public right-of-way with this vacation. There will be bollards here, so that the alley traffic does not go across the property. However, the city of Davenport is going to be given an access easement, allowing their garbage trucks to exit here onto either street. So, this just looks... This is facing west, where that access would be, where the garbage, or the sanitary waste, or the solid waste trucks would be going. And then, it turned either right or left to either Boys or Rockingham, or, yeah. And so, this is facing east. It shows where the bollards would be. The Family Dollar is immediately to the right. And we did both a neighborhood meeting and a public hearing, and there's been no comments throughout the entire process. Staff's findings are as the same as what we had in the staff report. The proposed public alley right-of-way vacation is no longer necessary for traffic circulation purposes, provided that the city's solid waste access needs are met as conditioned. And number two, utility easement would preserve the rights for future utility providers to maintain existing and future infrastructure. And number three, economic vitality will be strengthened in this stressed commercial Staff recommends the city Plan and Zone Commission accept the listed findings and forward ROW-22-02 to City Council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the following four listed conditions. Number one, all existing utilities located in the right-of-way, which are subject to vacation, shall be granted a blanket utility easement and access easement for the maintenance of such utilities. An ingress egress easement shall be granted to allow access of solid waste services, such as... Such easement shall allow for, at all times, passage from the alley adjacent to the east to Rockingham Road. Additionally, when access via the parking lot exists for passage from the alley to Boys Avenue, such passage shall also be granted an access easement for said route. Number three, a plat survey establishing these easements in Conditions 1 and 2 shall be recorded at the Scott County Recorder's Office. City staff shall review the plat of survey prior to recording. And number four, the city shall install appropriate traffic control signs as necessary in the remaining public right-of-way for traffic direction.
Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, would the petitioner like to step forward?
David West with the MMS Consultants in Iowa City. On behalf of the Overland Group, we've provided the surveying for Overland Group of Kansas, and here to address any questions or concerns. Looks like staff has what everybody had in mind.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? The petitioner?
Thank you.
Seeing none, final call? Anybody in the crowd like to speak either in favor of or opposition to? Seeing none, final call for questions? Seeing none, Commissioner Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Heppner?
Yes.
Ransgar?
Yes.
Reinhart?
Yes.
Manas?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
Stalk?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
And Lammers?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Any future business?
Yes, we will have a preliminary plat and a final plat at our April 5th meeting. So, those are coming up soon.
Thank you, Laura. Communications? Commissioner Lammers?
Me. I just want to take this time to thank everybody. I've served on this commission for 10 years, met some wonderful people, learned a lot, and just have been honored to be able to be a part of the growth of the city, and for the good of the citizens, the developers, the businesses. And I just appreciate all of you, and hope that your efforts moving forward will continue, and know that you're appreciated on behalf of normal citizens now. And I just want to thank you all and city staff for the efforts that you do too.
Thank you, Commissioner Lammers. We appreciate your efforts. Any additional communications? Seeing none, other business? None? We have a motion for adjournment? It's been seconded. All in favor of adjournment? Put a signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? Hearing none? We are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance. Please drive home safe.